Um, Mr. Clerk, are you ready to go?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, we're ready to proceed.
Okay, thank you. I'm Counselor Lisa Meary, and I'll be chairing the public hearing tonight for Mayor Little and council. And first, I have a rather lengthy statement that I have to make, and then we will go to presentation by staff and the applicant, and then we will listen to the presentations by the public. So for 220 Mountain Highway and fifteen fifty, fifteen fifteen and fifteen fifty-five Oxford Street, official community plan and zoning bylaw amendments. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section four six four of the Local Government Act and Ministerial Order M one nine two. This hearing will be held virtually with all participants, including council, staff, applicants, signed up speakers, and observers, all doing so by electronic means. Public participation in this hearing is being accommodated by speakers having signed up in advance, as stated in the notice of hearing, as well as being streamed live over the internet. In addition, those observing over the internet who did not sign up in advance to speak, but decided to do so once the hearing is underway, may dial in via telephone to speak. Information on how to do this will be shared over the live stream once we have exhausted the speakers list of first time speakers. The electronic means being employed for this hearing allow for effective two-way audio communications, while those who have signed up in advance will also receive video of the hearing via the Zoom software. As always, written submissions will be received by the municipal clerk on behalf of and shared with council at any time up to the time the hearing is closed. These may be submitted to input@dnv.org. Therefore, in this manner, all persons who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be afforded a reasonable opportunity to be heard and to present written submissions. The stick, the Chair has established the following rules for this hearing. Number one, we will go through the established speakers list, and currently on the list, there's seventeen speakers. At the end of the speakers list, the Chair may call for any other speakers not on the speakers list. These are all the dial-in speakers, if any. Two, you will have five minutes to address council for the first time. Begin your remarks to council by stating your name and approximate street address. Three, after everyone who wishes to speak has spoken once, speakers will then be allowed one additional five-minute opportunity. Four, any additional presentations will only be allowed at the discretion of the Chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused on the bylaws under consideration this evening. Five, if you have provided a written submission, there is no need to read it as it will have already been seen by council. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaws under consideration at this hearing. Now, just some important notes about public hearings in general. Council is here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaws, but council may ask clarifying questions. The clerk has a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaws which council have received and which you are welcome to review. This is available online at dnv.org/agenda. Everyone at the hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a second night. At the conclusion of the public input, council may request further information from staff, which may or may not require an extension of the hearing, or council may close the hearing, after which council should not receive further new information from the public. And finally, please note that this hearing is being stra- streamed live over the internet and recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. So now I'm going to go to Mr. Gordon, our clerk, and he's going to read out the bylaws.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Can you hear me clearly?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Gordon.
Just checking, thank you. Uh, so this is public hearing uh for two-two-zero Mountain Highway and fifteen fifteen to fifteen fifty-five Ox- Oxford Street, and involves two bylaws. Uh, by law eight-four-five-five and by law eight-four-five-six. By law, excuse me, by law eight-four-five-five proposes to amend the district's official community plan land use designation for the subject site from residential level six medium-density apartment, known as R E S six, to commercial residential mixed-use level three, known as C R M U three. By law eight-four-five-six proposes to amend the district's zoning bylaw by rezoning the subject site from single-family residential six thousand zone, known as RS four, to a new commercial, oh, sorry, to a new comprehensive development zone one-three-zero, to be known as C D one-three-zero. This C D one-three-zero zone addresses permitted and accessory uses, provisions such as density, height setbacks, building and site coverage, landscaping, stormwater management, and parking requirements. Uh, those are the two bylaws, Madam Chair. Uh, there is a staff presentation by Ms. Peters.
Thank you. Ms. Peters, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, just one moment while I share my screen. Okay. Uh, good evening, your worship, members of council, council and members of the public. Tonight's public hearing is for a six-story rental building with a hundred and thirty-four market rental units and six non-market rental units at the south end of the Ling Creek Town Center. As mentioned, tonight's public hearing is for two bylaws. By law eight-four-five-five amends the O C P's designation from residential level six to commercial residential mixed-use level three. Uh, by law eight-four-five-six rezones the site from single-family six thousand zone RS four to a new comprehensive development zone C D one-thirty. Although not the topic of tonight's bylaw, C D, sorry, by law eight-four-five-seven is a D C C waiver bylaw uh to reduce the development cost charges to zero for the six non-market rental units, and the D C Cs for the market rental units will be charged in full. And by law eight-four-five-eight is a housing agreement by law secure to secure the rental tenure in perpetuity and to secure the affordable rental rents and eligibility. Uh, the subject site is identified in red and is approximately three thousand square meters in area. The site includes seven parcels and six single-family houses. FIBS Exchange bus loop is located at the east end of Oxford Street, and shown in yellow. The FIBS Exchange upgrade project is currently in the design phase, and is anticipated that the project will be tendered for construction in the spring of twenty twenty-one with an anticipated eighteen-month construction period. The Creekstone Care Center is under construction on the north side of Oxford Street, across from the site, shown in purple. Uh, the applicant for that project notes that they are approximately ninety percent complete and are anticipated occupancy at the end of February or early March twenty twenty-one. An existing multifamily rental building is located to the east and shown in blue, and a multifamily rental building is under construction on the north side of Oxford Street, also shown in blue. Uh, this project is currently constructing the parcade and will likely start the above-ground portion in February twenty twenty-one with an anticipated completion and occupancy in approximately April of twenty twenty-two. A non-market rental building that received second and third reading on December seventh is shown in orange. Uh, and of note, the Greenspine Linear Park is shown at the green arrow. Uh, commercial properties are located to the south and designated in the official community plan for future mixed-use developments. And industrial uses are approximately a hundred and thirty meters to the south, and staff proposed to add the same provision as found in the covenant for the Ling Creek Apartments to the east regarding awareness of proximity to industrial uses. Um, a member of council requested that staff speak to other projects in the area. Uh, so this map uh identifies this is site uh to the south in red. The sites with the red stars are projects that are currently under construction in the area. Uh, as mentioned, the Creekstone Care Center is immediately to north and nearing completion. Uh, the green star at the north end is a project currently at the building permit stage. Uh, the orange star is a project that has zoning approval, but has not yet completed uh the building permit application. And of note, the sites shown in purple and in yellow are sites that have not been approved by council but have uh active planning applications. Um, other projects of interest in the area include the Ministry of Highways work at the Main and Dollerton interchange. Uh, these works have begun and are anticipated to be complete by the end of twenty twenty-one. And the Linton Road Works, which have an early twenty twenty-one start with an anticipated completion by the summer of twenty twenty-one. Um, the O C P designated the site as residential level six, which permits density of up to approximately two-point-five F S R. And by law eight-four-five-five proposes to amend the O C P to commercial residential mixed-use level three, which would accommodate the proposed density of approximately two-point-nine-six F S R. The existing zoning is single-family six thousand zone RS four and by law eight-four-five-six, which would rezone the site to a new comprehensive development zone C D one-thirty, which would allow the proposed density of approximately two-point-nine-six. So turning to the site layout, uh, the project includes one six-story building with a hundred and forty rental units and two indoor amenity spaces. Uh, seven-and-a-half-meter-wide dedication will be required on the east side of the site um for a new lane which will connect Oxford Street to the existing lane at the south side of the site. Uh, the proposed parking access will be from the existing rear lane to a single-level underground parking garage. An additional at-grade parking uh will be provided at grade, and again, access from the existing lane. The project has been reviewed against development permit uh guidelines for forming character of multifamily housing, energy and water conservation, and greenhouse gas emission reduction, and protection from natural hazards for creek hazard. Project has also been reviewed against the Lower Lynn Implementation Plan and the Ling Creek Town Center Public Realm Guidelines. Project achieves the housing goals of the O C P and an inflammation implementation plan, including uh providing a range of housing unit sizes and providing new rental housing. The application includes a number of off-site improvements and changes, including approved street frontages on Mountain Highway and Oxford Street, a new bicycle lane on Mountain Highway along the west side of the site, and of note, there is a new two-way psychopath being installed on the north side of Oxford Street. Creation of a new north-south lane connecting Oxford Street and the existing lane at the rear, and this will allow for the closure of the existing lane access to Mountain High, which uh to Mountain Highway, which will improve safety um at this location. And additional road dedications are being provided to improve the turning radius for buses uh from Mountain Highway onto Oxford Street. District engineering staff have not completed the review of the civil drawings, and changes to the design may occur as a result of this review, and the cost of off-site improvements will be finalized at the building permit stage should this project proceed. At bylaw introduction, a member of council asked a question regarding the value of contributions. District staff have reviewed uh the amount of the land being dedicated or secured for public access, recent market sales of land in the surrounding area based on lands with similar density and use, and have determined a reasonable square footage, uh, square foot rate for the land contribution, and this review has resulted in a total land value of the contribution at just under two-point-one million dollars. The project has been reviewed against the district's resident rental and affordable housing strategy, and the project meets several goals, including expanding the supply and diversity of housing and expanding the supply of new rental housing. The housing mix includes six non-market rental units and a hundred and thirty-four market rental units in a mix of unit types ranging from studios to three bedrooms. And of note, fifty percent of the units are in a two- or three-bedroom layout, which will be considered suitable for families. In terms of meeting the housing objectives of the district, the project includes six non-market rental units, which will help housing challenges for low-to-moder-income households with incomes between thirty to eighty-five thousand dollars. Rents for the project uh for the non-market units in the project range from just under a thousand dollars for a studio unit, which will be considered affordable for a household uh with an income of just under forty thousand dollars per year. And rents in the one-bedroom unit will be one thousand two-hundred-and-three dollars per month, considered affordable for a household with an income of forty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, the proposed rents are between nine and seventeen percent below the metro Vancouver median rents and twenty percent below the district median rents as published in the C M H C Rental Market Survey. And a housing agreement will be secured uh to secure all a hundred and forty units as rental in perpetuity, as well as to secure the rental rates and eligibility criteria for the below-market units. Uh, by law eight-four-five-six includes both a maximum and a minimum parking rate. The maximum parking rate uh is for one-hundred, one-hundred-and-one parking spaces with eighty-five for residents, fourteen for visitors, and two car-share spaces, which is an overall ratio of zero-point-seven-two for unit. And changes resulting from the review and finalization of the road improvements and civil design may affect the ability to provide parking on the site, and the C D one-thirty zone specifies a minimum requirement of zero-point-five-five spaces per unit or with the uh visitor and car-share spaces, a total of zero-point-six-six spaces per unit. Uh, the project includes a hundred and seventy-six bicycle spaces for residents and six spaces for visitors. The applicant has proposed additional spaces for visitors, longer cargo and stroller bikes. Staff are resolving the land dedications and available space on Oxford Street and are reviewing the impacts of the forming character of the proposed additional bike spaces. Public information meeting was held on January thirty-first, twenty nineteen, and approximately two-hundred-and-eighty notices were delivered to the neighborhood. Uh, thirteen members of the public attended, and ten members provided input via comment sheet, email, or phone calls. Uh, there was general support for the development proposal with particular support for the rental tenure. Uh, the proposal will meet step code three with uh proposed building uh measures that include a heating system based on air-source heat pumps, which run exclusively on electricity, a transportation demand management strategies, including measures to promote transit use, including bus passes with a credit provided at the start of all new tendencies, reduced parking ratio and car-share spaces, infrastructure improvements, including new pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and road alignments for improved transit, and anticipated emissions of approximately two-point-nine kilos of CO2 equivalent per square meter per year. Uh, the proposal includes a tenant relocation assistance package. There are currently six houses, and all are currently rented. The average length of occupancy is approximately two years. All tenants were made aware of the prospect of redevelopment at the time of their signing a lease, and the tenants include two families uh as well as students and young working professionals. Uh, the tenant relocation assistance includes extended notice to five months, three months of free rent, priority to rent in the new building, a moving allowance ranging between seven-hundred-and-fifty to two thousand dollars, and a tenant communications plan. Uh, of note, uh, tenants have been informed about the public hearing tonight, and information on tenant resources uh will be provided. And thank you, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Um, Counselor, are there any questions for Ms. Peters before she goes? Okay, thank you. And now we will have the applicant, and the applicant um has fifteen minutes.
Uh, thank you very much. Yes, I will um click some slides on the screen, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Perfect. Um, thank you, thank you very much, Casey, and uh, Madam Chair, members of council, it's uh we're very happy after many, many years of working on this project to uh be here and uh giving you more details and getting input uh from the public. First, I want to thank the staff of the District of North Vancouver. We've worked for many years together on this project, and many of the positive aspects wouldn't be as good if we hadn't worked collaboratively, and if they hadn't come up with solutions or very constructive criticism at times, and so we want to thank them for that. I also want to acknowledge our team members. I'm not going to go through all of them because many are not here, but thank you to all of them. I want you to know that both Brendan Stevenson, who is our uh traffic engineer, is here uh with us uh at your disposal to answer any of your questions relating to traffic and parking, and that our architect Yamamoto Architecture, uh, Tizer Yamamoto is also uh in attendance. Um, so just a quick overview of um when we started out on this project, and sorry if you hear my kids crying in the back, that's, I think, part of the situation we're all living in this strange year. Uh, the community benefits, uh, but just to give you a quick overview, we're adding much-needed rental housing to the North Shore. I won't go into the affordability problems we have and old uh housing stock that we have and that will need to be replaced sooner or later. The project was designed with families in mind. Casey has pointed out that we have fifty percent of two and three bedrooms in the project. We will talk a bit more about the below-market units in a moment. We will talk about how uh, and that's part of our uh, I think, corporate objective. You know, we want this project to contribute to building happy communities and how that is translated into uh the design of the project.
Could I just ask that you speak closer to your mic? I'm having a little bit of problems hearing you, and my, my, my volume's at full, so
Okay.
if we could just all make sure that we're speaking as close to those mics as we can.
Of course, I'm going to try to speak louder.
Thank you.
Uh, so we also have um a significant contribution to uh public amenities. I think Casey has addressed that, improving the public realm, improving circulation and traffic with about eighteen percent of our land uh that is being dedicated or that goes to easements or right-of-ways. We had a very aggressive greenhouse gas reduction strategy on this project. The project have, has been designed with accessibility in mind. We have hundred percent of the units that are meet basic accessibility, and eight of them that meet enhanced accessibility, and a number of them that uh meet a great number of enhanced accessibility features. Um, and then I also want to mention, and it's important because the question is always, well, could we have done more? And the D N V has verified independently with a urban land economist that the project cannot support more community contributions, and I think it's in, that that's, you know, really answering the question of why have we not done more on, on some of these aspects? Um, this is a view of the project as seen from the corner of Mountain Highway and uh Oxford Street. Um, and so very quickly, uh, on below-market housing, we have six units. We spent a lot of time thinking, uh, well, should we do more units? And um, the units that we have right now are minus twenty percent below uh the C M H C median rent in the district. Uh, but there are twenty-seven to thirty-six percent below market for comparable units, and we use as comparables really the rents that we see in the building that's next door uh on the same street. Uh, we're very happy that we partnered with Hollyburn Family Services Society uh to help us, you know, select our tenants and qualify them in coordination with the District of North Vancouver. Uh, we have agreed with Hollyburn Family Services that we would dedicate as a priority, the below-market units, to people with a disability. We have one of the six units that's a hundred percent enhanced. It's a studio, ideally suited uh for, you know, people that have, that are mobility impaired. And then we have five units that, in addition to being hundred percent basic accessible, have thirty-eight percent of, of the features of enhanced accessibility. Um, this is a view of the project as seen from um Oxford Street. We really tried to break up the building so that it would, wouldn't be such an imposing mass, and um, so parking, we, we know parking is a contentious uh subject. Uh, some people uh think there's too much parking. Some people think there's too little parking. We really understand both points of view. Um, we, we, we tried to strike the right balance. We have about zero-point-six stalls per units plus point-one for visitors and two car-share stalls. And so we believe that the ratio is appropriate, given the proximity to FIBS Exchange. And um, and, and we will give priority parking in this building uh to electric cars and to families. Uh, as it is today, and we had lots of feedback about that, many families will just not rent without parking, so some parking is still needed. And uh, and so what we will do, however, to make sure that this project doesn't create disruption, is every tenant uh before signing a lease will be informed that if he does not have a parking spot, he better not have a car. We also expect the D N V to ramp up bylaw enforcement in the neighborhood um so as not to create nuisance, you know, uh, people who don't have a place to park their car. Uh, now, the project is providing two car-share spaces and is paying for two cars. Uh, in exchange, Modo has agreed to, to provide about sixty-six thousand five hundred dollars worth of free memberships and credits for tenants. Uh, and so it's also important to mention that this is a neighborhood that's in transition. We have to expect that mobility patterns will evolve as the Greenspine is implemented, as east-west connections, you know, are improved. Uh, this is a neighborhood that will have three parks, that will have a lot of proximity shopping opportunities. Uh, and so we look forward really to the opportunity to convert some of the parking that we have right now, you know, to storage uh when we get there. In the meantime, we hope people will encourage, be encouraged by a number of incentives that drive them with, in additional to the car-share bus passes, a number of other things, you know, and a hundred and eighty-five bike stalls, including large bikes uh for strollers and, and uh, sorry, large stalls for bikes and strollers, e-bikes, uh, charging stations, and, and bike repairs. Uh, I should also mention that the building has been designed to have the capacity to provide electric charging to a hundred percent of the parking stalls. Uh, this is a view of the entrance of the building on Oxford Street. So, um, I will not go into the detail uh of our tenant relocation policy. We know uh between myself and my colleagues, uh, we know all our tenants personally, and we've known them uh, you know, since we purchased these properties or, or since they moved in. Uh, we heard a comment made by one of the counselors at uh, at bylaw introduction. Uh, we, we had sort of a one-size-fits-all approach to this, and, and we reviewed that significantly uh because we think that was a fair comment, that, you know, um, a lot of our tenants are actually uh, you know, young professionals or students. And so we thought that seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, you know, for those made really good sense, however, you know, it's fair to say that some have been in these properties for more than six years, and so we increased very significantly the moving allowance um to three thousand dollars for those and fifteen hundred dollars for those who've been there for more than two years, and um all tenants have been informed of the public hearing. I believe that some of them are present here and will speak tonight to the project, and uh we have also retained a relocation coordinator who will help them find the best options when they move out, and uh they will have priority to rent in the new building uh once. Um, so as I mentioned, building happy communities are really uh front and center in, in what we do. We have young kids. Uh, I live in North Vancouver, and I want my kids to grow up in a healthy community. Uh, we believe that we identified social isolation as being one of the great ills uh of our times. And so we really thought hard about how do we make this uh place uh, you know, a place where tenants talk to each other, where residents get to know each other and do things together. And so the idea is to manage the building as a community and not as a list of tenants. And we want the word caretaker to retake its, you know, uh, ethnomological meaning, which is, you know, architect, caretakers will be community animators and programmers, and there will be people that actually care and that take care uh of the residents. And so the amenities have been designed really with that in mind. We have two indoor spaces, uh, each one uh approximately a thousand square feet, one a little bit more, one a little bit less. And the idea is that those spaces will be, when you get into the detailed design stage, you know, the interior design will allow for co-working space, a lounge, a community kitchen, and the other space will be a multi-use space uh for fitness, lectures, workshops, uh, dance classes, art classes. We also have a large rooftop deck uh with a children's play area and with a garden and the ability for urban agriculture, uh, growing vegetables. Um, we also have already started interacting with some of the local organ, community organizations, uh, nonprofit organizations that are very interested in targeting specific um, you know, populations in, in the building for classes or workshops, uh, whether it's seniors, young mothers with children, and, and we believe that we've created this space. We will be able to create the space that will allow for that. We think that there's a need for having long life, lifelong learning being embedded into the design of the building. Uh, so just a quick overview of the outdoor amenity with uh sort of places for urban agriculture, as you can see here, with uh an outdoor area, and then really an area for socializing barbecue. And, and we have lots of feedback that, you know, uh, areas like these are, are very much used and appreciated by tenants. And just to give you a mood board, I think we can all recognize a little bit, you know, how important those, those activities and moments of being able to do things together, you know, are for all of us. This is where the two amenity spaces are located, but that was already in the space in the slides of what Casey presented. And here, just again, an idea of the variety of activities that are, you know, that can take place. Now, I want to mention, this is not about throwing money at it. It's just about being mindful of the importance of it, creating, setting the space apart instead of creating four or five more units and, or three or four more units and setting the space apart. It's, it's, it's not, it's not really about money. It's about then making sure that those places are actually, you know, have those activities happening in them. And that's why the programming and the role of the community organizer in the building is so important. In terms of sustainability, we, this is probably one of the topics we've worked the hardest on. We're surpassing step three requirements. But the problem with step three is that it's not addressing greenhouse gas emissions. And, and so we worked really hard in trying to electrify the building because we're privileged in British Columbia to have electricity, you know, from hydro being, being clean energy for the most part of it. The problem with that was hydro is much more expensive than gas. And you get lots of incentives for gas. You get no incentives at all for electricity. That's actually, once you dig deep into it, you find out you don't get any incentives and, or very little, not much. And, and so the problem was, well, it's all nice to have a building that would be a hundred percent electrical, but we want to make sure that our tenants can still afford the hydro bills. And so we worked really hard to, you know, find systems and try to find benchmarks. There's not many buildings that do this, with the exception of passive house, but that's sort of beyond the affordability of a project like this. And so buildings that are not passive house that go that far, you know, there's very few. We couldn't find any relevant benchmarks, but we worked really hard on the equipment. And so we're going mostly with air source heat pumps for heating, cooling for domestic hot water partially. That's where, why we're not at a hundred percent and for the common areas. We'd be happy to give you all the technical details about everything we looked into, geothermal, gray water harvesting, solar and the conclusions we came and how we came to where we're at right now. We had a number of people from the public that reached out to us and asked us very detailed questions. We were very happy to engage with them because we always learn new things. We'll also be mindful of the procurement of construction materials and finishes in this project. Water efficiency measures will be implemented. And there will be a proactive tenant involvement in the building's sustainability. So the people take responsibility and feel that they're part of our effort, you know, to prepare a better future for ourselves and for our kids and grandchildren.
We are just past the fifteen minute mark. Are you, oh, perfect. Well done.
Very much, and I'm at your disposal for any other question as our Tyso, our architect, and Brendan, our traffic engineer. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And council, as you know, you'll be able to email questions to Casey, Ms. Peters, if you have any questions during the hearing and then we'll have staff answer those. So now I'm going to go to the speakers list and restart my stopwatch. And the first speaker is Hassan Halvalli. I'm sorry if I'm going to butcher anybody's name. Mr. Halvalli, are you?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm in here. Thank you so much.
Tell me how to pronounce your name.
Hassan Halvalli.
Alvalli. Well done.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'm just living in, the building is close to the, was at Oxford Street for almost more than three years. And it's so convenient because it's close to the bus stop. And it's very hard for me when I just am moving from Victoria, try to find a building to rent it close to my work and the university. That is Capilani University that I go is more convenient. From the FIBS exchange, I can get the bus, going to the work and going to our university. So it's very hard first to find a home over there. So one of the things I just want to mention in here is over there on that area, need a more rental unit in the district to balance a market and the favor for the tenant. Because the tenant is very hard to find the space on that area. And the second thing I just want to mention in here, need a rental closer to the transit station that they are, that is more convenient for them. Because as a young, as a people like me, that is the start of work and it starts, finish the universities and then start to build up their life is they need, something is more convenient, like a transit and the market. And also in the experience living there, it's been a good location because I have access to the transit and all the convenience stuff. I really appreciate that you gave me a time to speak in this meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Joy Hayden, Ms. Hayden.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. What an exciting time for the District of North Vancouver with the number of unique and quality development proposals being brought forward to council. With council's approval to move an affordable housing project forward last night and this evening's proposal before you, the development at two-two-zero Mountain Highway and fifteen fifteen, fifteen fifty-five Oxford Street, the community can begin to realize the Lynn Creek Town Centre Council envisioned. It was only a few years ago that people avoided the Lynn Creek area unless you were to catch a bus, cross the bridge, worked in the industry district, or at the risk of aging myself, enjoying a beer at the Linwood. There was never really any reason to be in the Lynn Creek district. And that's changing and it's a good thing. To be a town centre, you need vibrancy, you need people, housing and you need establishments. You need opportunity to bump into each other. That is what creates community and the proposal before you does that. I understand council's concern with the level of construction in that area. But how else can you build a town centre without construction? It will eventually end. And when it does, the district will have created from a dark and forgotten area, a vibrant town centre. As for the parking, I have the utmost faith in the developer and the district staff that appropriate bylaws and policies will be made to address possible overfloor parking issues. And let's touch on traffic. Doesn't the foot of a major crossing and the proximity to a bus depot make the most sense for density? With the existing and proposed developments in the Lynn Creek area, I predict this to be a sought-after neighborhood. And in part, that will be a result of this developer's refreshing approach to creating social community through its amenity space. And last, let's talk about the six below market units. I heard Mayor Little loud and clear at this proposal's first reading where he said he'd like to see these units for people with disabilities. Let's make that happen. What better development than this one that has the values that these developers are bringing to this project to create a safe and inclusive community within an exciting, diverse and vibrant town centre? Thank you.
Thank you. Bruno Vahidi. And if I could just ask, just to name an address or a vicinity, that would be appreciated.
Bruno Vahidi, I live, I'm a resident of District of North Vancouver on Mahon Street for the last fourteen years. And in this past decade, I have seen the North Shore change drastically and some, some might say for worse, but I want to believe that it is for the better. The negative side is mainly due to some areas of North Shore going beyond any middle-class working family affordability zone. And on the positive side, the community at large has grown. And because of the densification of certain areas like Lynn Creek area, we have been able to welcome and accommodate some middle-class working families, adding dynamics to our neighborhood and communities and converting again, like, like the lady just before myself said, area that we would avoid. When, I remember when we were looking for houses for rent, we would avoid that area of Lynn Creek because the, just the way it was for a family, it wasn't safe to be there. And now seeing all these developments going in there, it, it, it makes a vibrant, vibrant neighborhood. So the district, the district council has wisely limited the densification to areas that are accessible by public transport or more environmentally friendly means like bike, areas that are bikeable or with car share programs. So the work done so far goes into right direction, I think. I want to congratulate the council for that. But it needs to be accelerated because we still see young families and professionals struggle to stay on North Shore and end up leaving North Van. Our friends, a family of two, just moved out of North Van at the end of November because the house they were renting was just sold and they couldn't, they couldn't find anything else affordable. Our adult children cannot afford any rental in North Van except a dark basement suite. So projects such as this one are very much needed in our communities and should be, I believe, encouraged and welcome to help us resolve the shortage of affordable rental units. I like, I like its location being close to main public transport hub and its energy efficiency features and its balance between indoor and outdoor areas where people can safely meet, combat the social isolation and have some meaningful conversations. I was pleased to hear that the staff had secured the rental rates as well, which is good for longer term. And therefore I would, I would support the project and ask if it's not too late even to give more density to help with shortage of rental housing. Thank you for your time, Council and Mayor.
Thank you. Justin Keen.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I live currently at two-twenty Mountain Highway, North Vancouver, on this street. I am in favor of this unit being built. I just know it's very hard to find places to rent out here. I was looking for a while, a little while ago and I couldn't find anything. It's difficult. It's frustrating. I just, everything is way too expensive kind of thing, right? It's just, it's not an easy time. I'm a little nervous. I'm not going to lie for this. I've never done anything like this.
That's okay. You're doing fine. Just slow down so we catch all, everything you're trying to tell us.
I was like, it's in a great location too with the FIBS being right there because I've only lived in North Vancouver for about a year and a half now. And I've found the transit is very helpful to get anywhere. Like I know now how to get anywhere from FIBS because I need to go in the city or wherever. So it's very good that that's close by because I don't drive. So it's like a very helpful asset, I think, to having a building built in this area. Yeah, basically I'm in favor of this. I think that's all I got for this. I'm a little, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Riley Simp is our next speaker. Just your address.
Hi, I'm living at, on the seven hundred block of Donegal Place in, in Delbrook. I also want to speak in favor of this project. I think it's a great location. I think it's an attractive looking building. I like all the energy efficiency things that are, that are a part of it. I really think that that part of the district is a, is a really good area to be developing. I think that we need more rental units. I think we need more density on the North Shore. If I can just speak to, to, to specific anecdotes. In my case, I work at Lionsgate Hospital and we, like everywhere in the lower mainland, are short nurses, we're short physicians, we're short all the staff there and it's challenging for us to get people to come to Lionsgate because it's hard to find places to work on the North Shore. You know, it's okay if you're, if you're, if you grew up here and you have family here and you can stay here. But if we're trying to get people to come from the island, if we're trying to get people to come from the interior, if we're trying to keep residents that are trained from elsewhere in Canada, it's hard to get them to come and buy a house in North Vancouver or on the North Shore. So having the ability to have more rental units available for them makes a big deal. We, we have had instances recently in the last one or two years of people who just said, you know, I can't, I can't find it anywhere. And they've gone off, one went to Clonan, one, or sorry, two went to Clonan, one that I know went to the island. And then just more personally, I had a nanny who was working with us who sort of finished, she finished wanting to be a nanny. And so she started working as a, like a teacher's aide or a class aide. And she spent about two or three months looking for a place. She was living with us. She spent about two, three months looking for a place to rent before, you know, before our new nanny had to come. And she, she started working in a place. She worked there for however long the summer or September, October and then had to leave and went, she's from Port Alberni, went back to the island because she couldn't find anywhere to rent that worked for her. So I'm definitely in favor of more affordable rentals, more rentals period. And I, I think that's a great area to increase the density. Thanks.
Thank you. Clayton Wellwood. Do we have Clayton Wellwood on the line? Let's see, I don't see, I don't see Clayton Wellwood. Okay, well, we'll come back to Clayton if he comes in. Nancy Ford. Oh, Nancy Ford. You need to mute your unmute. There you go.
There we go. Hi, sorry about that.
That's okay. Your address, welcome.
Thank you. A resident of nineteen seventy-seven Parkside Lane in North Vancouver, so in the Deep Cove area. And I worked for a number of years in a non-for-profit as an executive director and became very, very aware of the need for affordable housing. Not only for people who are dealing with health or health challenges, but also people who are working in the, in the not-for-profit sector. It was just mentioned earlier, the, the difficulty of finding staff at the hospitals, teachers' aides, et cetera. The rental housing is absolutely extremely difficult to find and it's also very expensive when you do find it. So I'm delighted to see a hundred and thirty-four market units in, in the, in the, in the works, hopefully in the works. The other thing I'd like to speak to is the, the enhanced accessibility and the below-market rentals. I'm surprised that this is not seen more often in North and West Vancouver, North Vancouver development, that we don't hand out permits to a developer with the expectation that there'll be two, three, four, five, six units that are rented and are below market, just in order to ensure that we have a mixed use, a mixed variety of people living in our communities. So I was delighted to hear about, about these, these additional six deeply discounted market units. And I appreciate that they're deeply discounted. I think that was a very thoughtful decision on the part of the developers. And I wasn't quite as familiar with the, how was it referred to, building happy communities, the mixed-use garden space. I'm delighted to see that as well. I think that social isolation is a major dilemma. The not-for-profit that I worked with, North Shore, it was North Shore Schizophrenia Society. It's Pathways now, but it's specific to mental illness. A social isolation is a, as a major issue for our families and our loved ones. And, and to see this kind of intentionality around building happy communities with mixed-use spaces and garden spaces and just finally the environmental considerations. So I'm, I'm very pleased to be here tonight to lend my support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I see we have Clayton Wellwood is on the speakers list. So if Clayton Wellwood can unmute. Clayton Wellwood. Okay, we're going to try Clayton again. Now we're going to go to Mayor Zia. Mayor Zia, Mayor Zia. Okay, we'll try Meyer again. Is there an Amir Devadi?
Hi.
Hi.
This is Amir Devati.
Hi, so welcome. You've got five minutes and we'll just ask for your address if you could give it to us.
Yes, my address is four five zero, four five zero Montreal Boulevard, North Vancouver, British Columbia.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I- Yes, I, I, I'm the owner of the Delbrook Farming and I have been living in North Vancouver since 2007. And I mostly run my own business. However, I, I, sometimes I get the neighbor to help in some of the projects that I have. And we used to get, find the people to walk around, you know, from the North Shore. But however, in the past four years has been completely disappeared.
We're having a bit of, sorry, we're just having a bit of trouble hearing you. Could you just, yeah, I'm not sure.
No?
Yeah, that's a bit better. Thank you. Carry on.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm so excited about this project and I'm hoping that it would help to our community that have the workforce living comfortably in this neighborhood. These days, I mean, before COVID area, when I was going to see us to pick up people that they were coming either from Burnaby or from Vancouver to help me with some of the projects, I could see that I'm not the only one. And there I would be able to see a lineup of some other business trucks that are waiting to pick up the people and take them to work. And to just bring you another example to show that how possibly a little crisis that we have over the, over the lack of affordable housing in North Vancouver is, I remember that Emily Chan, that she was the owner of the Oasis Bed and Breakfast. She hired me to help her with some of the issues that she had in her unit. And I went to that property and I could see that in some of the rooms, there are two or three beds. And by going late in the afternoon, I could see that most of the people that they are occupying that place, it wasn't the visitors. It was mostly the labors that they were working the high rises in North Vancouver. And it was quite sad that, you know, these people, they were building all those high rises and they are living in a room with two other people. So I could just bring it to your attention that, you know, how much that place was oasis for those labors to walk to work and come back to somewhere that they can sleep. And I'm hoping that this, this project would help us a lot. And I'm so excited to see that there is a project like this and definitely signing in for any other projects that is coming like that. Thank you very much. You have a happy holiday to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Corey Cost. Mr. Cost. So has, I noticed that Mr. Cost was in the waiting room. Mr. Clerk.
I, yes, Madam Chair, we'll just double check. Yeah, we're, it's surprising. Some of these people are on the list. And apparently they're not being able to unmute yourself. Yeah, Mr. Cost has been in and out. So we're not sure if he's having any technical issues at his end.
Okay, I'm gonna go.
Ask for him again and we could always come back to him. I'm keeping a list of.
I'm gonna go to, I think it's Maya, Meyer Zian. Meyer Zian, can you unmute?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hi, sorry, I had a difficulty. I couldn't be.
That's okay. So welcome. You have five minutes. And if you could just give us your address, that would be awesome.
So, thank you. My address is 2780 Valley Centre Avenue, North Van.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So the reason that I want to talk tonight, speak in favor of this project was based on my background, which is architecture and also I live here in, in the district. And the need that I see for having more rental projects in this area because I, I believe that there are lots of opportunities and the potentials here for specifically the North Van district. And this project is actually fairly close to where I commute every day. So I know exactly where it's located. So I, I think that in the long term, it would definitely benefit the area because the more we could have this type of rental projects in this area, we can technically balance the prices for the residential housing. Because, you know, North Van, I'm, I'm a resident, I'm the owner in North Van as well. But I feel that it's becoming more and more unaffordable. So while it has lots of opportunity for having a high-quality living lifestyle here in North Van, but many people cannot afford living here because of the price of the housing, which is even getting every year worse and worse. So this brings this opportunity to the young generations and to take advantage of actually living in this area while not bearing too much cost of living. And also it actually changed the facade of the, of the city in that area drastically. Because if you see the location of the project and I was looking at the, at the design, the modern design, which is not that drastically modern, that we can say that it's not, it's not aligned with the, with the nature of that area. It actually changed the, the environment of that area. And I think that it would, it would eventually this type of projects change, change the, this, this, this location's architectural lifestyle as well. So I, I really believe that the more we can support the, this type of rental projects, the more we can, we can, at the same time, we can alleviate the, the, the old-fashioned facade, I mean, urban facade that we have in that areas. So it will help us actually the urban planning that we are doing for this area. And then at the same time, we can, we can kind of control the housing prices and bring more affordability for the people who are interested in living in this area. And I truly believe that it will help the young generations to actually have this opportunity to, to live in North Van, especially I love Lally Valley, that where I live. And the, the location of this project is very, very convenient for, for the young family, families with the medium range income. So I see it as a, as a benefit for the, for the district and as a benefit for the society here. That's what I want to share with you guys.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Cost. Corey Cost.
And. Hi, Clayton, Clayton Wellwood here. I managed to solve my mute problem, so.
Okay, so we're just gonna, okay, Mr. Cost. We'll just come back to Mr. Cost, Mr. Wellwood. We had you on the list, Mr. Wellwood. We were gonna come back to you. So not worry, but we'll, we'll allow you to speak now if you're ready.
Sure thing. I'll be very brief.
Just your address, please.
Yep, I live at 840 Premier Street. And I'd like to speak in favor of this project. Like many of the other speakers have mentioned, we are in need of more rental housing here in North Vancouver. And this location seems to be ideally situated for that, being very close to FIBS Exchange, being close to the, the Second Era's Bridge. And it will be on a path, you know, a network of cycling, cycling pathways. And I think the developer has really put a lot of thought into some aspects of a building and a development that we can agree are valuable in terms of accessibility, in terms of sustainability, in terms of giving thought to the, the people who are currently renting in the existing single-family dwellings there and making sure that they are, you know, looked, looked after and given some options, including options to, to rent in this new building. And I really like what the developer has done in terms of thinking about how to, how to make this building, how to foster community within this building in terms of having two different amenity spaces. A lot of opportunities for, you know, gardening, gathering, play on the, on the rooftop. And especially the idea of having the caretaker be an animator because community doesn't, it doesn't always happen automatically or organically, especially when you've got a number of different people who may be moving from different places, who don't know each other and moving into the building. Community doesn't always happen automatically. It takes effort. And so this idea of having a caretaker who acts as the community animator to be doing programming in those amenity spaces, I think is a wonderful idea. So yeah, for all those reasons, I think the council should approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Mr. Cost, I understand is having technical difficulties. So we're gonna go to Amina Moran.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Welcome. You have five minutes and we'll just ask for your address.
I carry place on Delbrook in North Van. And yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'd like to speak in favor of this, of this project. I, I, I arrived in, in North Vancouver about 10 years ago with my family, the two children. And it has always been a challenge to find a suitable rental without even mentioning a rental which, which is kid-friendly. Also something really that we lacked of is finding a stable and durable rental. We moved probably about six or seven times in, in the span of 11 years because houses were sold, apartments, you know, buildings were demolished or for whatever other reason. And also the other thing is I, I, I worked in, at two schools and in the service industry. And we, it was always very difficult to find, find staff because people simply couldn't afford living on the North Shore or even finding a place for, in the first place, right? So, and yeah, what I, like, when I see this kind of projects, I, I, I feel it's, it's open, it's, it's modern, it's family-friendly, it's community-friendly and it's so respectful and mindful of people's needs. And it's, it's, it's thought, it has been thought in harmony with, with the surroundings, which is really amazing. And so, yeah, I, I really wish that there were more projects like this. So I definitely support it. Thank you very much and happy holidays. So.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Oscar Barrera.
Hello, everyone. I'm here.
Thank you. Just your address and you have five minutes.
Thank you. I live in the Blue Ridge neighborhood. First off, I want to thank mayor and councillors for hosting this and all the work that you guys have done. I want to mention the Lenmore area is a key area for the District of North Vancouver. It's an area where everything comes together, families, elderly people, students. It's just an incredible hub. So projects like this are very essential and highly, highly needed in the area. I'm actually a Realtor and a property manager. As I mentioned, I live in Blue Ridge and I grew up here. So I've been one of the lucky ones to be able to stay in the city. A lot of my friends have had to leave because of housing challenges. I want to mention about the design of the building. I think the design of the building is beautiful. The way that they've set it apart into two sections, not really overimposing on the street. It makes it look really good. But most, more importantly than that is the way that they've designed the amenities. Having the indoor and outdoor amenities and the whole aspect of creating the community is extremely important. And having these amenities are actually going to lead to having longer tendencies in the building, which is actually going to help create a community in the building. So it is really well thought out throughout every area here. Also, I truly do believe that increased density is really our number one weapon of choice to, to tackle the housing challenges that we have for rental, increasing prices and everything else. As a Realtor and as a property manager, I deal with this on a daily basis. And, and it's actually gotten to the point that it's a little frustrating to, to have phone calls from people where they will complain because they cannot find a place to rent or the prices are too high and, and it's because we don't have enough of this. So clearly I'm in huge support of the project for those reasons. I also wanted to mention two quick stories. I have two clients that purchased properties in the neighborhood, in Lenmore. And one of them purchased it with the idea of having it as an investment property for her retirement. Her daughter lives there now because her daughter was not able to find somewhere that she could afford. And she's not really helping her retirement plan, right? So that's one. Then the other one is actually, one of my clients is a downsizer. And she bought a modest two-bedroom condo in the area where she was planning to downsize. And she was not able to downsize because her daughter with a growing family needed to get out of her one-bedroom condo and could not find anything that they could actually afford. So she had to postpone her retirement and downsize some plans so that her daughter could stay in the area and they could be close by. So these are real-life situations that my clients, my friends, our residents are seeing. And buildings like this are our solution to this. Again, I'm in full support of the project. I think we really, really need it. I think it looks great. And I'm in huge, huge support of continuing to increase the density, specifically in this neighborhood. It's situated in a key place where it will make a gigantic difference to the residents in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Corey Cost, I think he's solved his technical difficulties. Mr. Cost. Can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you right now. Let's.
Excellent. Wow, after four crashes, I have no idea how you can accomplish that with this kind of system. But anyway. Good evening, your acting worship and members of council. My name is Corey Cost. I live at 2851 Callwood Drive. I sent you previously, just before the meeting, my discussion points. So I'll start off with the fact that I'm a scientist. I know that asking the right questions is already most of the way into the solution of any issue and problems. So here go my questions. Maybe I can answer some of them for you, but in random order. Here we go. Will cars have a resurgence due to the pandemic? Since cramped, unsafe and slow public transit has resulted in a dramatic drop in revenue and ridership, if only for the next few years. So that's a question that has to be answered because it'll come clear later that you're not gonna be able to rely on the transfer, public transportation system. And you don't have enough kind of parking in the area nor in the building. And this is going to be a problem. You need to address that. While more parking spaces will be needed to accommodate the cars, not only in the private parking spaces, but on our public streets. That's a question. Will we need more? Is the latter compatible then with convenient electric vehicles?
Cost, can you just hold on for a second? Can we have Mr. Salamati mute himself, please? Or, there you go. We've muted him for him. There we go. Sorry about that, Mr. Cost. Carry on. Mr. Cost, you, you're muted. You're muted. Mr. Clerk.
Yes, your worship.
For some reason, Mr. Cost is now muted.
Yes, and I'm just seeing if our technical staff can unmute him.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Cost, you were muted for the last probably minute. So we're gonna let you go back.
Well.
I think you were talking.
Electric vehicle charging. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, but you were muted for about 30 seconds.
Okay. Well, more parking spaces needed either on the, on the street or in the private places. I understand the streets are hopeless right now anyway. So you're going to need more parking spaces which have the appropriate electric vehicle charging facilities. Next question is, should all new off-street parking spots have at least level two plugins? As in the case for our adjacent municipalities and almost every municipality in the metro Vancouver. Did you know that the district of North Vancouver standard level one using 25 amps and 110 volts for only 20% of the stalls has not been updated for the last six years? You're that far out of date with the rest of the, of the lower mainland. And you know what the costs are going to be if you need to upgrade later? I understand it's exorbitant and will never be upgraded if you don't install the infrastructure. So I highly recommend for both scalability and for the people renting this place, that you meet the current real standards of the community, not the one in the district. The next, are you aware that the initial cost added of parking adds a hundred dollars a month for a single spot? Are you then, do you know anything about the future cost trends of that? Or is like rent under some sort of control? Should the interior and exterior common areas in and around the building not need adapt, adaptations for the new pandemic reality? Next point, should careful attention to shadow impacts? More on this later. On adjacent play areas require these areas to be placed such that they have more sunshine? In other words, have an open to the south to these play areas. Are you aware that per square meter though, mid-rise apartments annually consume much more energy than modern single-family homes? It is not long overdue that the actual energy consumed by new houses be measured and reported annually to the district in order to confirm the, the computer model's prediction of the energy use.
Mr. Cost, that's five minutes and.
Points through, so I'll come back.
Yeah.
And I'll be able to hopefully debug this problem we're having.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So the next speaker is Alariza Salabadi. And welcome. You have five minutes and we'd just like to start with your address.
I live in Lynn Valley currently. 3886 Phyllis Road, North Vancouver, V7K2T8.
That's good. Thank you very much. Welcome. You have five minutes.
I've been working in the film industry since 1997. There within, we have a studio in North Vancouver, one right off the bridge, one the bridge studio, one the mammoth. You can get to all of them within 10 minutes from Second Narrows and the one in North Vancouver, you can get there in two minutes. There is more rental place needed in North Vancouver. Our guys always looking for a place to rent in North Van. I was asking the guys who got a house in North Vancouver if they can rent their basement or whatnot. So I think it'll be a good idea to allow a high rise and especially close to the highway. The only thing I say is that I know in Phyllis, on Oxford, there were a few high rises. One high rise that was built, I don't know if you can call it a high rise, it was only a sixth floor. But more parking is needed. If you guys are going to put a high rise, just make sure it has ample parking. There's not enough parking, but definitely a high rise isn't needed over there. That's my thing is we need more rental places in North Vancouver. That's pretty much all I have to say. I don't need the five minutes. I can pass that five minutes to other people.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Arman Hadari.
Yeah.
Hi, welcome. You have five minutes and we just need your address.
Yes, 111698 East St. James Road, St. James Road in North Van District. I'm in favor of this project and I want to tell you why. I, once I finished school in the year 2000, I moved in North Vancouver. I rented a one-bedroom apartment in North Vancouver. And then within a few years, I, you know, bought a one bedroom and then a few years after I bought a two bedroom. And now after 18 years or so, 20, 20 years rather, I live in a house in North Vancouver. I have a family that, you know, we are raising here in North Van. So it's, it's a town that's been really good to me and has allowed me to establish a base and, you know, create a future for my family here. And I like this to happen for other families as well. Affordability is one issue, but also that, you know, we need young professionals and young families to move into this city the same way I did and start, you know, building their lives here and establish a base here and start contributing to this city and the city as a whole, the tribe. And I feel that a complex like this, especially with all the bills of missiles that you've been talking about, with the accessibility, with the location and everything that goes with it is a fantastic entry point for these people to come into this city and start building a life here. And it actually helps us to compete against the, affordability is one issue. But also keep in mind that other cities are also trying to, other cities are also trying to win over people to go and live there. So we need to compete with them as well for population and for integration. So that's why I feel like, you know, this, this is really an excellent entry point. I wish a complex like this was available. When I was beginning my life here and, and wanted to rent a place, my, my, my place at the time didn't even have a gated underground parking. It was a full on open underground parking. So life is completely different now. And, you know, things that come, all the features and all the amenities and everything that comes with this building is, it's fantastic. And it's quite attractive. And I wish, I, I think the city has done a great job working with the developers. They all have done a great job and this is a fantastic product for our city. And I'm looking forward to see it being constructed and, and opened up to the new residents. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Chuck Cosman.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chuck Cosman. I live at, on Primrose Lane in North Vancouver, near Hansworth School. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I, I want to echo a lot of what a lady named Joy Hayden, who I've never met before, basically dropped the mic earlier this evening wonderfully and spoke so positively about this project. I too am very much in favor of this project. I, in my, in my, you know, personal life, I have a tenant suite in my basement, a two-bedroom suite at my home that I've lived at my home for four years now and that suite has been occupied for almost the entire time. I recently turned over a tenant who moved out for various reasons with his girlfriend and, and was overwhelmed by the response rate after listing my unit available at very fair rent on, on Craigslist, ended up renting that to a couple of young folks who are starting their careers, who both live in North Vancouver. Wanted to work, are working in North Vancouver and want to stay here, but were struggling immensely to find a place they could afford. So it really just highlighted in one sense, the, the lack of, of, of rental properties on the North Shore, especially two bedrooms and three bedrooms, which are, you know, so nicely covered by this, by this development. Secondly, just as, as a citizen of, of the district of North Vancouver, I, I'm totally inspired by the development plans for the Lynn Creek area. I saw, you know, in the recent election cycle, I really got involved and looked and made a, made a thoughtful decision about what I wanted to do with my one opportunity to vote and learn about what the plans were for our district. And, and boy, there are some, some very intentional plans for that neighborhood. When I think about the development of public transit, the focus on a cyclable neighborhood, a focus on, on green and a focus on building for a future that we can all live into. This development from my perspective, the density is right, the thoughtfulness is right, the community planning is right. Really meets, if not exceeds, the precedent that needs to be set for the other developments that ultimately undoubtedly will, will come in that neighborhood once the, the kind of foot gets let off the brake, hopefully in the, in the near future, because there's a wonderful community to, to be built there. And, and that is really, that's really what I wanted to share. So.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Dawn Peters. Dawn Peters.
Hi, can you hear me, your worship?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we're, I'm unmuted. Good evening, Madam Chair and Council. My name is Dawn Peters. I live at 678 West Quains and I chair the Community Housing Action Committee. And we're pleased tonight to add our voices to the powerful others we've heard tonight, especially those unable to find suitable rental housing. And I know that my office has had a significant increase, excuse me, increase in people who are looking for, for rental accommodation. The applicant TPL Development Oxford has asked our committee to provide its opinion, provide its opinion on its application to redevelop seven existing single-family residential lots to create a six-story rental building with a total of 140 units. Of this total, 134 are to be market rental and six to be below market secured in perpetuity. We support the approval of these two bylaws that issued tonight, which is affecting, as we've heard, a key area of the district. We have met with the developer to discuss this application and with staff. We note the project will comply with the district's rental and affordable housing strategy, especially with respect to the affordability of the six below-market units. These will be below both the district median and that of Metro Vancouver for both the one studio, the one-bed studio and the five one-bedroom units. These rents are considered affordable for households of 39,000 approximately for the studio and 49 approximately for the five one-bed units, which we think is appropriate. We understand that the deep discount for these units, rather than a lesser, lesser discount across more units, is a deliberate response by both the developer and the district to a serious demographic need. We think that's appropriate as we do partnering with Hollyburn Family Services being a very positive lure for you. We support these non-market features and are also pleased to the prospect of a significant addition to the district's market rental stock also sorely needed. We also understand the significant land cost to the developer to provide various traffic and access around the site. We applaud the green gas, the greenhouse gas reductions and basic enhanced accessibility provisions as well. As well, we note the provisions of the district's tenant relocation policy are ongoing according to the developer and include first right of return. We understand the developer will be the property managers. The site of this project, no doubt, will be attractive to young professionals and young families and its proximity to Capital University can be a significant component of affordability. We also see the developer making an effort, a genuine effort to create a community in this admittedly constricted site generally. Affordability will also be enhanced by the extensive transportation network nearby fibs. It is apparent that this application has been close to five years in the district's approval process, which has likely negatively affected the affordability of the project due to rising construction costs alone. This issue of a long approval period, especially in our double distress of a housing crisis and a pandemic, which includes both employment and housing losses for some time to come, seems a critical piece that should be addressed. However, Madam Chair, we are encouraged late to hear council commit to examining the potential of non-market housing on district-owned lands and to hear the mayor's comments the other day at the recent state of the district event regarding the intention for the district of North Vancouver to focus on the other side of the housing continuum, as he put it, after years of chiefly high-end housing development. And your, your worship, Madam Chair, we at CHAC would be pleased to support this council agenda in any way that we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Peter Tevan.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. And just your address and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Address is 1900 Block Indian River Crescent in Seymour area. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to ask a few questions and, and leave them with you. I think it's pretty generally known that I, I, I almost always support proposals to build rental housing, whether it's market or non-market. But I do have a couple of issues to place before you for your consideration and hopefully you can get answers to your satisfaction as you go through the remainder of the public hearing and your deliberations on this. The first, and, and by the way, for council, I have taken these notes and emailed them in so they could be included in the binder because there's a little bit of data here as well. But you, you may recall earlier this year, I submitted to you the results of an FOI request that we placed through ICBC. We, and we examined the number of registered vehicles at Lynn Creek Apartments. And of course, that's the property that is, I measured it today on a map. It's, it's a whole 19 feet away from this proposed building. It's, it's kind of ironic that 19 feet is about the distance that a standard parking spot is. And parking is the issue I want to raise. At 1561 Oxford Street, Lynn Creek Apartments, right next door, what the ICBC Freedom of Information request showed is that although they had a parking ratio of 0.765 there, which represented 75 passenger or 75 parking stalls for residents. In fact, there are between two utility trailers, seven commercial plates and 80 passenger vehicles. There's 92 vehicles registered at that address. And what we've seen is a significant impact on the neighborhood. So, you know, I think what we learned there is that even, even though it was the same zoning there, we, we learned that 0.765 parking stalls per unit was not enough at Lynn Creek Apartment. And I would suggest, I would suggest it's pretty easy to deduce, first of all, that the district's reduced parking rates for multifamily residential developments policy is not working. It doesn't prove out in the world, real world, and it's certainly demonstrated at Lynn Creek Apartments. But this proposal as well has even less parking at 0.72 units. And, and I suggest that if the same proves out, it will fail even worse. I recall that councillor Bond said at a previous meeting, we know that people still own cars. They just won't drive them as much. Well, I would submit to you, council, that if they are owning a car but cycling or taking transit to work, that means, that means their home location will need more parking, not less. Because while they're away at work, the car needs to stay there and no one can else can use that spot. The more appropriate minimum parking needed at Lynn Creek Apartments next door would have been closer to one stall per unit or even more in order to take the parking burden off of our public street spaces. You may also recall that it's quite often quoted that the cost of a below-grade parking spot is about $50,000. Well, I'd suggest that's actually inexpensive when you compare it. If you take the land value for one parking spot, and what I did was I took the appraised value for 1555 Oxford Street, one of the lot. one of the lots in question here, I prorated it down to 200 square feet. Well, the land value to lose a street parking spot at that kind of price is $78,298. So I don't think we should be concerned that, you know, a $50,000 parking spot is expensive when the public space getting used is over 78,000. You might also recall that there is probably, I could say, no more street parking in the available, in the area, particularly alongside Oxford Street. So if you allow development here without adequate parking, you definitely will be adding to the mayhem that is currently in the neighborhood. I suggest to you, council, you can control the development approvals and you can control street parking, but you don't have the legal authority to regulate whether private citizens buy cars. And this pandemic has proven to us that private automobiles are COVID-safe. They're not going to go anywhere anytime soon. And if we restrict, like if we were to restrict the number of parking stalls in one underground level and say that that's a fixed number, 101 spaces, less 14 for visitors, two for car share, and at 85 stalls, then I think the right thing to do is build 85 units here. I'm past my five minutes, so I'll come back later if you please.
Thank you, Mr. Tevan. Okay, so that exhausts our speakers list. I'm just going to go to Mr. Gordon to see if we have anybody waiting to speak. Mr. Gordon? For a first time? Number up on the screen.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's it for the signed-up speakers. So now we can turn to any other people viewing the live stream who did not initially plan to speak, but now choose to speak. There is the information they need to dial in. So we can pause for, you know, 30 seconds to a minute. We'll see if anybody turns up in the lobby. In the meantime, I understand there is a question to direct it towards staff.
Okay, and Ms. Peters, do?
Thank you, your worship. The question to staff, the first question was regarding charging stations. Should they be updated? The district's current electric vehicle charging policy requires that 20% of spaces be wired for Level 1 charging and that the remaining, so then 100% of the spaces are, have conduits in place so that they can later be wired for Level 1 charging. So that's the current policy and this proposal does comply with the policy as written. The second question that staff have received is a request to comment on phasing plan based on existing approved rezonings. So as mentioned in my presentation, there are a few other applications underway in the Lynn Creek Town Centre. The applicant has advised that should they be successful and council supports the rezoning, that they would anticipate construction starting at the end of next year. So that would be late 2021. And of note, the Creeksone Care Centre on the north side of Oxford Street is anticipated that it would be finished construction at that time. And as well, a number of the projects in the area, such as the Ministry of Highways work, would also be completed. I believe there were five stars that I showed on that map showing projects under construction. Two of them are also nearing construction and are, you know, completely out of the ground and are finishing up indoors as well as landscaping. So I would anticipate that those two would also be finished at that time. So then the other one on this block on the north side would be the Adira Pivot Rental Building. And they anticipate that they would be targeting completion around April 2022. So they, you know, should all that timing align? And should this project be successful through the rezoning? There could potentially be a few months of overlap there. But worth noting that at different phases of construction, there are different demands in the neighborhood. So these projects would be at very different phases of construction. And then the other project worth noting is the project that receives second and third reading at council last night. And just being mindful of closed public hearing, I won't speak too much to the timing of that project. Of note, staff do require a construction traffic management plan with all development applications. The applicant has submitted one with this application. It will be required to be updated and revised as it goes through the various stages. And a final accepted one will be required as a condition of issuance of building permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we do have a caller, caller 364. Are you, just unmute your microphone? And then just if we could ask for your address and you have five minutes.
Yes, your worship, Madam Chair, we're just sorting out the unmute. We need to tell them that it's star six to unmute their phone. Star six to unmute.
Caller 364.
Again, it's a star six on your phone to unmute it?
Okay, so I think we're going to try to help out caller 364. And we don't have anybody else waiting to speak for a first time?
No, you're, I believe that's the only one we have from the dialed-in so far.
And we'll just ask one more time for caller 364. If you can press star six on your phone to unmute. We can't hear you. Okay, so we're having some problems. So we're going to go to, back to Mr. Cost for a second time and then we'll try to get caller 364.
We could always have them try to reconnect, your worship. If that fails, they can break this connection and have them reconnect. But yes, there were a couple people wishing to speak a second time, if you wish.
Yeah, I've got that. So Mr. Cost? Are you joining? Mr. Cost? Mr. Cost, can you hear us? Okay. Mr. Cost? We're unable to hear you.
Hello, Judith Brooke here.
Okay, just a second. So Mr. Cost is having some technical difficulties. So we're going to put him on mute. And Judith Brooke, are you caller 36?
No, she's, your worship, she's the second caller.
Oh, she's the second caller.
But a first-time speaker, so we.
Okay, so Ms. Brooke, your address and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Judith Brooke. I live in the 2000 block of Laurlin Drive in Lynn Valley. I'm just calling to say that I do support this project. I thank the developer for the amenity space. I think that's a brilliant idea. I appreciate the developer working towards the 90% electricity that he has set up here with use of the heat pump. I wish it was 100%, but we'll see if that can be changed at any time prior to the development permit. The things that I would like to bring up are a request for conduits for future solar to be a part of the building process. I realize that there are conduits in place for a certain percentage of the parking spots for EV charging. And my second request would be to consider to have full conduits for EV charge capability for all of the parking spots. And my third request would be for during development and build to consider embodied carbon and search out low-carbon concrete alternatives that do exist and other similar items that would lead to a low embodied carbon on this project. Thank you again and good luck with the project.
Thank you very much. So we have caller 364 is back. Caller 364, are you there? Caller 364?
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Madam Chair, they'll need to mute their computer.
Thank you very much. Okay, am I said?
Yes, go ahead. We need your name and address and you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Laurie Parkinson. I live near Moodyville in the city of North Vancouver. I've lived in the city of North Vancouver for over 25 years. Thank you, Madam Chair and council, for the time to speak here. First, I want to say to congratulate you on passing the STEP Code and GHGI amendments last night. That was fantastic. I am pleased to see so little fossil gas in this used for domestic hot water heating in this building. I have discussed this project a bit with Adele. This will reduce the electric bills for the residents. As a society, we are becoming very aware of carbon pollution from heating. There's also a lot of carbon pollution from the manufacture of building materials. And that's called embodied carbon. It's something new we're becoming aware of. I'm pleased to see that Adele is concerned with his building materials and I hope that he will select low-carbon ones. A lot of work has been done by a Canadian named Chris Magwood on embodied carbon. There are many easily available products for construction that have lower carbon than what is traditionally used. For example, the production of cement releases lots of carbon dioxide into the air. And you can change the cement mix a little and really reduce that, the carbon emissions, because you're using less concrete or less cement, rather. If you use less cement and add, you have a choice between a variety of waste products from industry, interestingly enough. Silica fume, fly ash, blast furnace slag. These have been added to cement for a long time. This isn't a radical thing for builders to do. It's just now there's a recognition that adding these and putting in less cement results in less cement being manufactured and less carbon emissions. Another, there are many ways to reduce embodied carbon. Instead of the normal magnesium oxide board that's used for ceilings, you can use drywall, which has a lot lower carbon footprint. So it's something for us all to think about. I want to.
Ms. Parkinson, could you please turn the volume down on, we're hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. I shouldn't realize that. Did any of that come through?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And we're focusing on the zoning of the building. But yes, we got that first part. It's just, it's sort of echoey. It's hard to hear.
I bet. And I've been, I'm off-grid here and I've been dealing with a cranky generator. And so that's why you couldn't get a hold of me in the first place.
Closing in on five minutes, so.
Fine. I echo Judith Brooke's comments on roughing in conduit if you, for electric, for solar panels. It's a pain in the neck to put them in afterwards. It would be a really wise thing if Adele put them in just standard construction in a building. It will reduce retrofit costs in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Ms. Lanz or Mr. Gordon, do we have any other first-time speakers?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. Actually, no, no first-time speakers. I believe that's the two that were dialed in. We have a third dial-in person, though, who we believe might be Mr. Cost.
Yes, I think that's, okay. So Mr. Cost, are you ready to speak for a second time? Mr. Cost?
Madam Chair, we seem to, we still have them connected via the web link.
We're going to go to, we're going to try to sort Mr. Cost out. We're going to go to Mr. Tevan for a second time. Mr. Tevan, are you ready to speak?
Sorry, Madam Chair, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Ah, thank you, sorry.
Five minutes.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to continue on. I want to bring up the subject of rental-only zoning to you, council. I've done some study into the economics of building rental developments in place of market purchase units. And I can say with a great amount of confidence that in a development with an average of 15% profit margin, that a developer could lose easily up to 70% of their profit if they offer it for residential rent or lease. And that's because the GST of 5% and the property transfer tax of 4.3%, totaling 9.3%. Those two items would eat up at least 62% of the profit instantly. And then they would make the time for positive cash flow to, it would go 24 months, about 24 months down the road at average market rent. I strongly feel, and I'm working on asking our provincial and federal governments to exempt these two taxes in cases where developers request and accept rental-only zoning. But in order to accommodate that, first municipalities would have to enact this rental-only zoning in their zoning bylaw. So my request is that the District of North Vancouver move to implement rental-only zoning and perhaps it could be first employed with this property or this group of properties. And I'm certainly, will make myself available to, you know, share my findings with staff or whoever you wish. So I invite anyone to follow up with me. The next thing I'd like to touch on is energy use. I'm a little confused between the presentation earlier tonight and the materials included in the agenda package. So I ask you to look at page seven of the report that was included in the agenda package. And it states there that the applicant is currently exploring two options. First, a gas-fired hot water, whether resulting in 9.8 kilograms of CO2 per meter squared. And of course, I'm sure you will be aware that the bylaw that you adopted last night would make this option illegal, depending on when the building permit was issued. Or two, the second option is 100% electric heating. So my suggestion is that you direct staff to inquire and report back before you close the public meeting. Because of course, what we found last night with another development is, even if council had a question, because it was the subject of a closed meeting, staff were unsure about their ability to answer it. So I suggest you keep the public hearing open until you get the answers. But the question would be, for both market renters and non-market renters, what will the impact to affordability be under this second option? I'm sure that you, council, a majority of council would want to go with this option too, considering that you declared a climate emergency. I'm sure the emergency would include. Ask about is COVID.
You're breaking up.
Oh, sorry. Is this any better?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, I'm just holding up the microphone to my mouth. The next thing I'd like to inquire about is COVID safety. You know, what we've seen, and at least I believe we've seen during this pandemic, is a falling off of marketability for multifamily residential. for multifamily residential and a resurgence in marketability and values of single-family homes. I submit the reasoning for this is probably twofold. Number one, you get private green space, and number two, you don't have any shared public spaces where contamination can, can occur. I think with that, all of us in, in our community would like to know and see that designs of new developments have been designed in a way that ensures safety and health security within the COVID kind of paradigm. So I would certainly like to hear about what protocols are in this building design that will, you know, not to have many, have too many confined public spaces. The, I've got kind of one more item, and I'm at four minutes 14. Would you like me to come back or continue on? I don't hear anything, so I'll continue, shall I? Madam Chair, I think you're muted.
You were muted.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Tevan, yes, keep going. We're not sure if we have Mr. Cost on the line yet, so. And we don't have any other speakers for a second time. So carry on.
Okay, I'll carry on. Thank you. I just want to inquire a little bit about the zoning. I know that the OCPZ designation for these properties is multi, multi-residential level six, which is up to 2.5 FSR. But this proposal includes an OCP amendment to commercial residential level three, which is up to 3.5 FSR. But the reports that we see in the package and the plans show zero commercial component to this proposal. So why then are we asking for a commercial residential zoning? The only logical conclusion that occurs to me is that it is simply as a workaround to work around the OCP designation of 2.5 FSR. And on that basis, I think that you should probably reject the amendment to the OCP. I, I think that, pardon me. I think one of the, the problems with this is that a new designation under the OCP might lead to an incentive to flip this property on speculation. Because once it gets the designation of 3.5 FSR, the property value goes up. Its marketability goes up, and maybe no rentals ever get built. So in conclusion, pardon me one second. I have something stuck in my throat. In conclusion, I, I urge you to make sure before you close the meeting that you get adequate and detailed answers to all your questions, including those from the public that you consider pertinent. Especially considering that it seems to be get, difficult to get questions after the close of the public hearing. So I thank you, and I look forward to learning the answers to those things alongside you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevan. Um, do we have Mr. Cost available?
Hello, can you hear me at all?
Yes, we can.
Now, I'm not sure if you're coming through by my phone, because both of them failed, both the phone link and the the Zoom link that I made. So I will turn down the volume on my phone. I'm not sure which one you're receiving, but it doesn't matter, as long as you can hear me. Okay. So I'll carry on wherever we left off. We can? It's not long overdue, is it not long overdue, that the actual energy consumed by a new housing unit be measured and re, and reported annually to the district in order to confirm the model's predicted energy use? Basically, the question is, how can you manage what you don't measure? You still hearing me?
Yes.
Of course, I can't hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, good. I will just hang up the phone here. So while I've got you by this very tenuous connection, I want to just mention shadow studies. Shadow studies are, for the more useful hours from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, should be made a basic requirement. Note that no shadow studies were done for the six-month period between September 21st and March 21st, that six-month period. You have no shadow studies. The Shutter District of North Vancouver Standard require at least a shadow study for December 21st. Wouldn't this better inform the public on this critical livability aspect for kids playing outside? Did you know that our OCP mentions affordability and/or rentals far more often than market housing? It mentions like one or two order of magnitude more. Do the key word searching through your OCP and find out how important it was that you do affordable rental housing. Are you aware of the minor misprint on page one of the additional information package, which states in item three of the table of contents that the current OCP designation of the subject site changes from level five? It's not level five. It should read level six. Next point, are you aware that this project proposes an OCP amendment by law 8455 CRMU3, which designates this project for an FSR of 3.5 and commercial residential zoning? While the accompanying zoning by law 1402 by law 8456 designates only an FSR of 2.96, would it not be irrational that this project is approved to allow only the OCP designation of the requested FSR of 2.96 without any commercial use? If you don't do this, are you aware that in the future, this or some future council could simply grant the full FSR of 3.5 and waive any subsequent public hearing? Once you've modified the, the OCP, that's, your, is game over for council. Finally, what community net benefit does this really bring developing to the current residents? If you don't know the answer to any or all of these questions, I strongly urge you to get them before you decide on this issue. I really suggest that Council, that you request staff to get the answers to all of the above questions before you close this public hearing, because you will be unable to get the answers after you close this public hearing. Finally, I, I do note that my friend Peter Tevan came out with a number of $70,000 per, for a parking spot. But I believe his calculation missed out that you have to divide that by the number of floors, not simply the area of the lot and the value of the lot. You have to divide it by the number of floors that are essentially paying for that whole thing. The FSR, incidentally, of a basement is not counted towards the total FSR in a building of this nature, as they are not counted for single-family homes. So I still believe in a number like my sister, you know, in a lot paid for in Calgary, which was $5,000 in a high-rise unit. So $50,000 is far too excessive, in my opinion. And that completes my public input, and it's been quite an uphill battle to get to this stage to have input. And if I have technical problems, I, I pity the ordinary person who is not an expert in this kind of communication. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. I'll just mute him. Okay, so that exhausts the list. Mr. Gordon, do we have any other people waiting in the waiting room?
No, Madam Chair, that's it for any first-time speaker dial-in. And the two, Mr. Tevan and Mr. Cost, who indicated they wanted to speak a second time, have done so. And I've just got a confirmation, there's no other callers, but I do understand there are some questions directed towards staff.
So let's go to staff and see about the answering the questions that have been submitted. So Ms. Patton or Ms. Peters?
Thank you, your worship. A few questions have been directed to staff. The first one is regarding the OCP designation of commercial residential mixed-use level three. The OCP designation states that this can be used for an entirely residential project, an entirely commercial project, or a mix of the two. It does not require that you have any component of residential or any component of commercial in it. And this designation was selected because it was the appropriate designation for the density proposed. I will note that the project immediately to the east, which is residential with a small component of commercial, as well as the project under construction on the north side, both have received the same designation. So this will be consistent with the other OCP designations that have occurred on the block already. The second question directed to staff was regarding the STEP code and the changes to the district's construction bylaw. The proposal is for a STEP code three plus a low-carbon energy system. So the change to the construction bylaw, which has an applicable date of July 1st, 2021, this project does comply with that proposal in that it's a STEP code three plus a GHGI target of less than 3.0 CO2 equivalent per meter square per floor, per square meter of floor area. So they have followed the conversations that have been going on with Council regarding the changes to the STEP code and have elected to move forward with proposing a low-carbon emission system with their project. Thank you.
Ms. Peters, you do have some feedback on your computer, so you might want to have IT check that for the next public hearing, because it sounds, I thought it was a vacuum first. I thought we had the janitors vacuuming, but I don't think that's the, the problem, so. Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, so we are going to ask if anybody, we're gonna do the three, and then I'm going to ask for a motion from Council, unless there's any questions that Council have to ask. And I would just ask that you speak up or raise your hand on the, Mr. or Counselor Hanson, do you have a question?
No.
No, okay. All right, so we're going to go, is there anybody that would like to speak a first time? And I would ask that everybody unmute if you want to speak a first time, anybody that's on the call. Is there anybody that would like to speak a second time? Is there anybody that would like to speak a third time? Oh, Mr. Cost?
If you can hear me. I think the, we need a complete technical review of why it is that a simple Zoom session has so much of a problem in staying stable on a, on a Windows system. I am, I've done Zooms to a lot of places for many hours, and I find something is wrong with the system connection to District Hall.
Okay.
I urge you, please.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yeah, just a sec. Yes, Mr. Cost, thank you for those comments.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Gordon?
Yes, we will be in contact with Mr. Cost to do some practice sessions to sort out the issues. You may observe that there's been, what, 2019 people that have, we've had a few small mute on or off issues, but by and large, it's been very successful. We, we're not quite sure, we've been monitoring it closely. We're not quite sure where the problem is, but we'll work directly with Mr. Cost on trying to address that. But I would caution against a resounding condemnation of the Zoom session tonight. I think it's been quite successful.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gordon. I think, you know, everybody has individual experiences with technology, and for all sorts of reasons, we had a couple of callers. It was hard to get them in, but we got them in. And certainly, technology is not perfect, but we have had, generally during this public hearing this evening, relative ease with having people speak and be able to present their, their comments to Council. But we will do some troubleshooting tomorrow with Mr. Cost to see, you know, if we can improve going forward, as we must improve, certainly when we're doing public hearings remotely.
Yes, we'll most definitely pursue that tomorrow and try to troubleshoot it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So I will just ask for a third time, is there anybody else that would like to speak?
And to confirm, Madam Chair, we do not have any callers.
Okay, great. Okay, so now I'm going to go to Council. And for a motion, Counselor Hanson, do you have a motion? You'll have to unmute.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the public hearing be closed and the matter be referred to regular meeting of Council for second and third reading.
And Counselor Back, are you seconding that? Okay, thank you. Counselor Back says he's not muted. So I'll ask everybody to raise your hands. We'll call the question on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. And this will, so that is the conclusion of this public hearing. This public hearing is now closed. Council is no longer permitted to hear any new information in regards to this application. And this, as our last regular meeting was last night, this bylaw will be returned in the new year for consideration at Council. So thank you for everybody that took part this evening. Thanks for calling in, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Good night and Merry Christmas.
Night.